Good morning. I'm calling to order the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting for Tuesday, November the 9th. Let's start with an invocation if you'll bow your heads with me, please. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day and the beautiful weather we have. Thank you for the rights we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we go through this agenda and tackle these issues. These are items that affect ourselves, our neighbors, our family, our community. Please help us and be with us as we make these decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire.
Thank you, having three members present. We have a quorum for this committee, and I need to get an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen.
Move to accept. Second.
So moved. Next, we have an approval of the agenda for this meeting. Do you have any changes or questions about it?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am, sure.
Having none. We will accept this agenda and move on. Do we have any presentations today? I don't believe we do. I don't have anything on the consent agenda. Moving right into debate. Mr. County Manager, tell me about what you have on the list for us.
First item you have for your consideration is an agreement with Ingle Entertainment. You will notice that we're still working on the agreement, but we did want to go ahead and get this in the mix to have before the full board. The agreement, I believe, is with the county attorney now, and he's going through that, but I did want to give you just a quick update. We've been approached by Ingle Entertainment, the possibility of coming to Columbia County to film a series. It is on-county operations. The one that they're looking at right now is doing something on 3-1-1 specifically. So it would actually follow the call from coming into 3-1-1 to us going out and doing whatever it is, repairing a pothole, whatever the case may be. Anybody that was in the filming would have to agree to it. They'd have to sign a release, but this allows them to do it. This is a big company. This is the same company that does North Woods Law and some other shows that you're familiar with on TV.
Is it a training video or a like Sheriff Rowntree on the police thing?
No, it's neither one of those. So if you've watched Alaska PD on the Discovery Channel or North Woods Law on the Discovery Channel or some of those, some of those type things, well, somebody out here, I'm sure, has seen those shows.
Can I get a witness?
Yeah. It's a very mild version of cops. It's not like that at all. It's...
Are they paying us?
I'm sorry?
They paying us?
No, they're not. I mean, this is just showcasing Columbia County. When they first approached us and talked about that, my first question was, how did you find Columbia County? They wanted government that was an efficient government, specifically in this region, to be highlighted, and we talked to them and felt like it would be a good thing to let them come in and film our folks. And, I mean, I don't know if it'll go anywhere or not, but it gives us an opportunity to...
Did it cost us anything other than...
Didn't cost us a cent. Doesn't cost us anything. Doesn't cost them anything.
Move to consent.
Wait, 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 wait. So sometimes these dramas, even if it's just an HGTV show, it's not fun to watch unless some drama happens. Somebody falls on their face, somebody does something stupid. Do we have any...
We do.
I don't want them to come here and create a drama that wouldn't exist.
We have some editorial control in this, so if there's something, we absolutely say we don't want that on there. They will not put that on there if there's something we don't want to do. So we will work with them on that.
Because to dramatize some of our operations, they not make us look...
I didn't think about that.
Very good. I mean, because it's no fun to watch if something bad doesn't happen.
You know, this is one of those things where we're really, you know, if you want to call it going down a limb, I have such faith in our staff that we're going to do a good job. If the drama is going to be, it's going to be on somebody else, and then that person's going to have to sign off on it. So if, you know, if we're going to a house with a lot of junk cars or something like that, we're citing somebody or something like that, then again, that person's going to have to sign off on it.
And we'll have legal watching over it to make sure we're not doing something against our policy, against, you know, our procedures.
I mean, I don't know about legal following up, you know, on it. I mean, it's what we do every day. That's part of the series, is kind of what we do every single day. You know, the interesting thing about this is, to some extent, with open records and open government being the way it is, they could actually probably come in and film a lot of it without our consent. So we're preferring to work with them so we have that editorial control.
Yeah, I get earlier's point, which I did not think, and that's, we just don't want them coming in here and it turns out to be the hick. Now, you know, here they are. They have too many dogs in the yard.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't know what the calls are going to be.
Whatever, you know.
It probably won't have a second season.
Yeah. You know, it's not going to, it's not going to portray us any worse than we really are. I can say that. I mean, we're not going to...
That's the Emerald City, you said. That's like...
I understand, but that's my point. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to create, you know, we're not going to go out there and create sets for them to go to to be, you know, make it worse than what it really is.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Moved. That is moved to the consent agenda. Next?
Next item you have for consideration is the service agreement for Safe Homes of Augusta. The total amount's $2,000. The staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Mr. Kennedy?
Ma'am, the next request is a request to create four unfunded fire training positions. These positions would be funded with salary savings. They would be funded in the event that we know we have an upcoming vacancy in fire services. So whether through retirement or someone moving on, we could take those salary savings, go ahead and hire a new firefighter, and go ahead and begin the training process. The problem is, if you don't, you wait till the person is gone, you could end up potentially with a six to eight month timeframe on the back end where that new employee is not fulfilling their duties as a firefighter but going to become qualified. So this is an attempt to shorten that time period when we have the salary savings that we can use to backfill that upcoming vacancy early.
Are we fully staffed now? I mean...
Close, close.
I mean, give or take, somebody leaves. I don't mean, I mean...
One, now one.
So then salary savings, would it be a budgeted item next year? Because would we budget these four next year?
No, sir. So what we want to do is, we have salary...
What if you don't have salary savings in the...
Well, if we have salary savings, then we don't start the academy early because they're unfunded.
Right.
But we always have salary savings in the fire department because there is a bit of turnover. So there's always some. You know, we could, you could see it from the other side. If we decided next year in the budget, we wanted to fund these, we would fund them, and if we didn't use them, then they would become salary savings.
That would be my recommendation.
We can absolutely do that next year.
What if you don't have salary savings?
What?
If we went ahead and funded them in next year's budget...
Next year's budget.
And we didn't use them, then they would become salary savings.
If you want a program that's going to continue, I would budget it. That's just my opinion. Next year, budget the four positions.
But right now, we have the, we're in a position where we know we have three coming up, and that's not going to help us with three.
Yeah, I'm just talking to you.
So we have the, we could do that. I'd like to go ahead and get these three people into school now, too, with the salary savings that they do have. They are available now.
I'm separating the two issues. I'm just thinking ahead.
Oh, we can do that. Yeah, I'm all for that.
I guess to the point now is, without additional revenues, we wouldn't have a balanced budget if we did them.
I understand. So I'm separate.
But yes, sir. To your point, Mr. Chairman, I think what we'll do is, in next year's budget, we'll just evaluate this program and go ahead and budget for it.
So your motion is to create these four unfunded positions for now?
Yes.
This request is for this budget year?
Yes.
Not withstanding anything next year, which we'll tackle in the budget. Correct? Is that what you're saying?
And take a different approach next year.
Have a motion?
That's it, yep.
What's the total cost?
What's the cost for firefighter one?
About $116,000 worth.
Right.
Times four.
Right, $120,000.
If you filled all four of them. You're talking for the three?
At four, right.
Yeah, for four positions, but we're not going to be using all four. You're thinking next year?
I'm just thinking the cost impact on this year. I realize you have savings. I'm just trying to understand.
But if somebody retired today, if he found out somebody retired today, we would have four. We'd put somebody else in the mix.
Yeah, we could, you know.
So it could be up to 80 grand for the rest of this year, yes, sir?
We do. We have another week or so.
So moved. Next?
On? This is for the fiscal year 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant application. To explain this very quickly, basically what it is, it outlines the things that we're required to do in emergency management in order to get the $37,216, and we have to match that. So basically, we do it in our salaries to make it easier. So in the application is all the things. Staff recommends approval.
And hour 37 is already in your budget?
Yes.
Where does it come from again? What's the...
GMA. We use it to match our salaries. It's just that way, rather than equipment or TV.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you, Sean. Internal Services?
Yes, the first item I have for you is a budget amendment for the Fire Services Fund. If you recall back when we were working on the Tax Digest, the actual growth in the fire piece, the special district digest, was 6.07 percent, but we actually prepared the budget using 3 percent. So this gave us an extra $434,742 of additional tax revenue. The staff recommends amending the Fire Services budget to include that amount as additional revenue.
So what are we doing with the $400,000?
I'm just going to put it in their salary area for now to offset it.
Bear with me. I got to work. We go through a budget, and we have the positions, everything we're going to do, what we're going to spend, and we come up with a number. Now we're saying the number is actually higher, so there's a $400,000 surplus?
No, it will come out of the transfer we do from Insurance Premium Tax Fund. You know, that fund helps balance the Fire Services Fund for whatever the Tax Digest doesn't use.
IPTF.
IPTF. So it will reduce what we have to transfer from that fund and free up some money in that fund.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you. So moved. We have a donation next?
Yes. The next item is a donation from retired Judge Carl Brown. He has $1,402.45 left in his former campaign account. He'd like to donate this to the juvenile court to be used in their ongoing service to the youth of Columbia County. Staff recommends acceptance.
Aided?
Move to consent.
So moved. You have one more for us?
Yes, the final item I have is a revision to our procurement policy. It's Comprehensive Policy Number 603.1. The Georgia Department of Transportation is requiring that we adopt its procurement policy for the procurement, management, and administration of engineering and design-related consulting services. This is for any projects that have state and federally funds included with them, and that's how it applies to us through the GDOT's LAP program. The staff recommends revising our policy as presented. If you look on page three, what we have decided to do is simply put a paragraph in there just stating that we will comply with this policy. Instead of detailing the whole policy out, and then if GDOT changes it, we would have to change our policy again. We're simply going to say that we do agree to comply with this policy.
And we have, we are saying for all state and federally funded transportation projects, we will comply with that. Is their policy vastly different than ours?
Not really. It's just several pieces of the Georgia State Code. And Kyle, if Kyle's here, make him answer more of the specific questions. We already have a policy dealing with part of it, but they want us to specifically say we will follow their policy.
There's no gotchas in their policy where somebody reads through ours and goes, yeah, 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 and just kind of move on past it and not realize they've put something in there that would trip us up.
Oh, their current policy.
The verbiage?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right. Is there anything else, Leanne?
That's all I have, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, are you spending money today?
I'm spending a little bit.
A little bit. Let's hear it.
They don't have. Thank you, sir.
We just found $400,000, so.
Different fund.
And the first item I have for your consideration is a proposal from DB Integrations to repair the Cresttron unit in Judicial Center and Courtroom 4. Obviously, modern courtrooms have a lot of technology, and in the courtrooms that we have in the Judicial Center, we use Cresttron. You might be familiar with what Cresttron devices are. They're basically the systems that enable presentations. They bring the screens down from the roof. They enable you to select an input so that you can put a DVD on the screen, a video on the screen, audio, just a lot of different things. And unfortunately, the equipment that enables that in Courtroom 4 is broken. The equipment there is analog, meaning that it's several years old. They don't make the parts for it anymore, so it can't be replaced. Just you can't get a like-for-like. So we're proposing to replace that with digital equipment, and we have to do a change at the podium and then all the way back to the data closet in order to make this happen. So we have a quote from DB Integrations for $11,130.37 to replace this equipment, and we're proposing to fund it through the general contingency funds, or general fund contingency, I'm sorry.
What is the condition of the other three courtrooms?
Yeah, three courtrooms are in various states. One of them has been updated recently, so I wouldn't expect to have to come back anytime in the future with that. The two others, we're working with them to modernize as we can at a lower cost. This is the first one that's actually totally malfunctioned, though.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next?
Okay. Next item I have for you is Comprehensive Policy Number 733.1, Technology Physical Security. One of the challenges in the world of technology these days is security, and you've all heard me talk about security quite a bit. Typically, when I do that, we're talking about logical security or our network, people being able to hack in and things like that. One of the trends among the bad guys, hackers, the people, the bad actors that want to do harm to us, is to attempt to do, to use our physical security against us. They want to try and go into data closets that aren't secure. They want to go to remote locations and try and hook into the network. And this is one of the areas where, when I receive cyber insurance forms or surveys that I have to fill out, they are trending more to ask, do you have a technology security policy? Are you taking proactive steps in order to enhance your technology physical security? So what this policy intends to do is give us the foundation for that, and it basically will mandate that we need to have a manual with policies, procedures, that are more secure, which is why I don't want to put those in the policy. But then, we've also been working with various departments like traffic engineering, IT, water utility, to make sure that we're bringing all of our external physical security under this umbrella to make sure that we're working from the same sheet of music, so to speak. So I've been working with these folks. The intention is to have a manual fielded within the next couple of weeks that we'll begin working with and essentially shoring up all of our physical security.
If, create a handbook, then that will check the box for you about having a technology physical security policy.
Well, the policy actually checks that box. The handbook is our internal document to make sure that we're following our procedures and that if we have a provision in there about someone requesting access to a particular facility, that they go through channels to do it. It's not just a matter of, oh, you need the key? Sure, here it is. We're going to be tracking who has access to what to make sure that we'll have that recorded.
So if somebody had, this is a random question, but if somebody had Open Records Act, wanted to see our policies, our security policies, our technology policies, is there anything in any of them that would, that would come from?
Documents like that are exempt from the Open Records Act.
Just the internal, just our folks?
Internal only, and there's, and I forget the actual reference, but within the Open Records Act, there is a provision that specifically cite on the agreement or on the document itself that says that it's not open to open record requests.
So moved. One more?
One more, yes, ma'am. Speaking of security, you're probably familiar with multi-factor authentication. If you have a...
No.
Will be.
Just give me a minute, sir. If you have a bank account, you do any banking online, and then you get a text or an email or some kind of acceptance after you attempt to log into your account that says, hey, is this really you? That's multi-factor authentication. It is, it's a kind of a rising standard, and again, it's a compliance issue. Our last go-around with cybersecurity insurance was adamant that we needed to have some type of multi-factor authentication in place. And Mr. Kennedy can tell you, you know, the Army's been doing that for years. A lot of private companies have been doing it. My daughter has to do it at Augusta University, and I'm going to assume that most other college students have to do it as well. So we're, we want to implement this in order to be compliant with the latest rules and regulations that are coming out about security. We have a proposal from Presidio, the company that we deal with for Cisco, to implement the Duo product. We've been testing it in-house for several employees, and it's been successful so far. Essentially, adopting this will require an outlay of $62,547.33 over a three-year period. IT is going to budget for the next two years as part of its IT operating budget. However, we need $18,867.33 now, which we're proposing to fund through, yeah.
Would it take you extra labor to get all this started, to install it, to explain to the employees how this works, to log them back in after they've been locked out because they tried too many times? You're going to need extra hours?
No, ma'am. Before we roll it out, we will prepare some documentation. We'll offer training if it's needed. It is very simple. We're not anticipating that there's going to be a long, painful rollout with people that just can't get...
It's going to be painful, no painful. Thanks.
When are we using this? I think, this is where, okay, it's going to send a code to your cell phone or to your email to log into something. I'm trying to...
It'll send you a code to your phone. When I attempt to log into my computer at my desktop right now or to my laptop, it sends this through my phone. I pick it up, and it has a big red box, a red circle with an X in it, and a green circle with a check in it, as long as I've got my phone registered.
Anytime we turn our computers on, we're going to have to get a code.
Yes, sir.
Did we not talk about different technology?
No, this is it.
I thought it was something where you didn't...
This is it, and it really is very simple. And it does give you, the whole reason for doing it is to give you that second layer of protection. I could crack your password and not be able to get into your account still. You could give me your password, I still wouldn't be able to get into your account unless you give me your phone, too, which in that case, I'd ask for your wallet. But it is, and with cybersecurity insurance, it's becoming a requirement now.
So, for example, when I look at my email on my phone, am I going to have to have a code to...
On your phone, no, sir.
How about this?
Yes, sir.
Anytime I look at the email, I'm going to have to put a code in.
When you log into your county account, yes, sir.
I never log into my county account. It's just here, so.
Hit an accept button.
This is not a six-digit code you have to put in. This is...
Email you and say, is this you? And you say yes, and then it tells backdoor that it works.
Right.
And the other thing it's going to do, it's going to give us the leeway to get rid of the 60-day password change. Okay.
Move to consent.
It will, it will now be 30 days.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Because somebody loses their phone and can't answer the question. I'm sending it to Michael's office. All right. Is there anything else in technology?
No, ma'am.
Okay, very good, very good. Do we have any other committees this morning? I don't believe so. On my agenda, do we have any legal matters? We do not, no legal matters. Let's see. Staff reports, county manager, personnel savings. Tell us what we've saved so far.
The first, just item for your information is our personnel savings. You can see in the general fund is a little over $301,000, and the elected officials is over $132,000, so the total amount's $433,000. We do have that broken down for you by department, and also the turnover rate calculation. You can see, we're pretty steady with our turnover rate. It's probably a little less than it was last year, but it's probably, at the end of the year, it's probably going to be about where it was last year.
Do you have any questions on that? All right, moving on to Internal Services.
The first report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report, and this is for the month ended October 31st. We should be operating around 33% of our budget, and all funds are operating well within these parameters as expected for this time of the fiscal year. Come next month, we should, the revenue should be much higher because of property taxes coming in. And I'd also like to comment, just for your information, that we are working with the state of Georgia with the grant program through the new American Rescue Act, and we have just yesterday submitted all of the information for the law enforcement and first responders grant supplement, the $1,000 each of them will get. So we've been told there's only one person in the whole state working on this grant, so it may be a little, before we hear anything, but we have submitted our piece.
You. What's next, boss update?
The next item is the sales tax update. This is for the month of September. We received just shy of $2.6 million, and our annualized percentage increase is at 21.33%.
Questions? Investment report?
Yes, the final report is the investment report, just for your information.
Good. Questions, do you have any?
Do not.
Mr. Richardson, holding it down out there. You good? All right, do we have any public comment today? All right, having none, and I have no executive session. Before I adjourn, I want to remind everybody that in December, we will have all our committee meetings on the Tuesday, December 14th. So if you have any business for the other two committees that will be in December, be sure, you know, you'll be coming on December 14th, and we'll do them all on one day. I don't have any other business for my committee. We will adjourn and come back in...
Couple minutes.
Couple minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
The Development Planning Services Committee. We've already had the invocation and the pledge. We have three members present. You have the copy of the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved. Any changes to the agenda?
Not in my laws, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, move forward then. Nothing, presentations, nothing in consent agenda. So we'll move right into the debate agenda, the new business. Deputy County Manager?
Thank you, sir. First one I have for you is a contract with Orion Waste Solutions for our countywide refuse service. Very clear, this is to pick up Columbia County government refuse, not Columbia County citizen refuse. We're only dealing with our dumpster pads there here. We did put out RFP. We did receive back three proposals. If you do look through the proposals, you will see that GFL scored highest on this. However, staff is recommending we go with the second-place solution. The technical score for the second-place solution was higher than GFLs. And the reason we recommend the second place is we're having a lot of issues with our current provider, who is the number-one provider, our number-one respondent here. We're looking to go with Orion instead of GFL. It does cost about $1,000 more per month, but we will actually get service out of this company, we feel. We are not getting it now from our current provider. Staff recommended an early contract with Orion.
Okay. I believe we have Mr. Barrett here representing them. Why don't you come up and talk to us a little bit about your company?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to service the residents and the community for Columbia County. We currently have the Columbia County School District. That was a recent addition we made in July. If you see our pretty blue dumpsters in the neighborhood, it's, you know, they say Orion on them. They're blue. They're all new. Our proposal with this is to swap out all the containers with new equipment. We recently partnered with Summer Street Capital and Coastal Wasterecycling out of Florida. So there is a little piece of an acquisition here. They're going to be, they're going to be primary holders of the corporation. We will switch over to a name of Coastal, but it's our same staff. The nice thing about this opportunity is I've actually got nine trucks planned coming in by the end of December of this year that I didn't have prior to this acquisition, this merger with Coastal. So we're really excited about this opportunity. And we're really excited about the opportunity of working in Columbia County, furthering our footprint here. We've realized that Columbia County is a great place to do business, and we want to continue that partnership with the county.
You're local?
Yes. I personally live just over on Deerwood, here, about four minutes away.
I would consider that very local.
That's very local.
Thank you, sir, for leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next item?
I'll let Mr. Prather come up and talk to you about a project he's been working on.
Morning.
Morning.
Stephen.
The first item I have for y'all's consideration is the rejection of the bid of our market, the market. This project initially started as the parking lot, the plaza parking lot and the farmer's market. Together was one project. Our designers, early stage of my career here, had the project at about $6 million. Me and my staff basically broke this project into get it under budget and to get our parking lot on time for the use. So this market was the second phase. Different architects and engineers than we did previously. So the project got forbid in October, and it came back at $2.6 million. So the initial funding amount we had for this complete project was around $3 million. But we were able to get these projects lower and closer to our budget. However, this one just couldn't get there. We were recommending the rejection of this bid. Put it on the shelf. We'll, yeah, the construction market turns around and reevaluate that when we.
Because I don't remember, was this a SLOST item or a?
This was a GeoBond.
Bond?
You started out with $6 million to do the market. Start, say those numbers again.
Our, our, our cost estimate to do the project was at $6 million. So we designed this, however, you know, we all worked together. We designed this project. We had $3 million. The cost estimate was six. Cut the project in half to get the parking lot done on time.
How much was the parking lot?
Parking lot's $1.6 million right now-ish, and it's still kind of rolling right now. We hadn't closed that project out yet, so we don't know the funding left over.
What was the bid?
The bid for.
Deck.
No, we're talking about the parking lot, not the deck.
Lot, okay, okay, sorry, my bad.
So this, this project would be in that open space right near next to the PAC.
We had $3 million GeoBond money. Brought our firm in. They came back with their estimates of $6 million. Sent them packing. Stephen and his group reworked it. The parking lot is phase one, $1.6 million-ish. That leaves us $1.4 million left over.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
$2.6. There's our problem.
Thank you, sir, for explaining that. Any other questions?
Stephen, when do you, do you think you want to resurrect this?
So we've, we've talked internally about trying to VE this project. This is a, the core of this is a pre-engineered structure to cut off 20 feet or 50 feet. We just can't get enough VE this project to make it.
If you don't do it right, it's going to look like a pole barn in the parking lot, and that's not.
And you've seen the picture. It's a sexy building, and there's just no reason to try to force it. Hopefully, in a year or two, we'll have a better market.
Hopefully, in a year or two, we keep the same plans, maybe rebid it and.
The actual structure was $800,000 in the bid?
Yes.
$800,000 for the structure itself and then another $1.8, all ready, stand it up. Yeah, we, that's a, there you go.
All right, I can't, I don't know how to put that in the minutes, like raised eyebrow.
Move to consent.
All right. Second.
So moved. Next item, sir.
The second item I have is part of the Sheriff's Administration building. That project's underway. We've broken ground up there. Part of the design for this facility was a file retrieval system, a rotating file. So early on, we designed this building to have multiple file storage areas and records and HR. We basically designed the provisions, the electrical and where they are in the building around this leak retriever system. So what I have for you is a agreement to purchase these in the amount of $152,745.00 from state contract. I want to go ahead and do this now because of the price increase at the end, at the first of the year that they've told us. So that's why I'm purchasing them now. They are going to give us a place to store them at their facility until we'll be ready probably end of next year to receive delivery of these. So this is why this is coming so early. But this is within our budgeted amount for the FFNE of the project. As you know, the project did come in under budget as well.
That is a sales technique. That is a sale technique. Prices are going up. You better buy now. In terms, this is, these are paper files, right?
This is the, this is the machine, the actual file storage.
Right.
Yes, but for.
Aren't we trying to go digital as much as humanly possible?
Eeyore, can't speak for the sheriff.
Staff recommends approval.
Motion to consent.
Well played, sir.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the floor to consent.
Second. Thank y'all.
So moved. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Planning Services.
All right, before you, we have the right-of-way improvements, utility easements, and detention pond for White Oak Business Park. This is the extension of Innovation Parkway, not really phase two, but it's kind of the second portion of Innovation Parkway. This will accept all of those improvements, and staff is recommending approval.
Second.
So moved. Any legal matters? Okay, done. Said, let's go to staff reports, Planning Services, please. Item A.
For your review with no additional action, the October 21 planning with department workload. We'll add that we did put in there the sign permits, just to kind of give you an idea of how many signs we do get a month. So we're going to start tracking that on this as well, just to get an idea of how many signs we're getting.
Questions?
Then also is the September 21 plan review workload report. Ask for information. Answer any questions you might have.
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Development Services, please.
First item we have is the 2020, 2021 Development Services monthly report. A copy of that is attached for your information, no further actions required. The permits are just slightly ahead of where they were last year. Inspections are up tremendous amount over last year due to a lot of commercial versus residential this year. Any other questions? I'd be glad to address those.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Move forward, please, sir.
All right. And next item we have is the October 2021 Development Services financial report. And a copy of that is attached for your information, no further actions required.
Questions? Okay, move forward, sir.
The last one we have is the temporary events alcohol, temporary event alcohol permits. A copy of those permits are attached for your record, no further actions required.
Thank you, sir. You have the questions? Any public comments or comments from commissioners?
I'll make a quick one. It's my understanding that the Supreme Court is hearing our judicial circuit today.
Great.
Don't expect anything's going to change, but folks aware. Is that right, Chris? It's on the agenda today, right?
Good news. Nothing for executive session. Like to, no further business. We'll adjourn at 9:12.